Good evening to everyone. Call the City of Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. Everybody should have a copy of the revised agenda that Chris had sent out. There's two items added. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for the agenda.
I'll make a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Communications. Is everybody that would like to address the council? If so, please come forward. Mr. Joe Jensen.
Yes, sir.
Stage is yours, sir.
Could you help me? Do you want to give them three of these? Do you need twenty of these? Do you need twenty more of those? Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Try to keep your routine to five minutes of work.
Unless your music. Okay, is that time to start now? Good timing. All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Jensen. I'm the Director of Main Street and Marketing for the Mount Vernon Lesbian Community Development Group. Our mission is to enhance and promote the business environment, including but not limited to the Main Street District, and enhance the quality of life in both the communities that we serve. So, there's a couple of things I wanted to let you know. We just recently came out with our annual report, and you know, I've been doing this job now for eight years, and I have eight of those annual reports on my desk, and this one was by far the biggest year I think we've ever had. And I know you're aware we've been working with the city, but maybe your audience doesn't necessarily know, being raised, by working with the city's volunteer committee, $1.5 million for the Wellness Center. It's important that everybody knows the money is sitting in an account at CCG, but it's not going to stay there as soon as those bills start coming in for construction. Those checks will be written through our office, and that money goes to every one of the communities. So I just think it's really exciting. We've never had that much money in our account before, and it won't stay, but it's really exciting. Also, I want to tell you about the Main Street Iowa Awards that's coming up. So, the Main Street Iowa Awards is coming up March 8th, and I think I sent you all an invite, and I know Tom's coming, Stephanie's been before, but if anybody wants to come, you'd be most welcome. We'd purchase tickets for you and spouse or another, whatever, if you want to go. And it's always a really big night, but they let me know that this year, they haven't told me how Mount Vernon is going to be recognized because of the project we did last year with the Smithsonian. And I talked to the head of the Smithsonian, Carol, who worked with me on this project, and she's flying out to be a part of it. It's really kind of a big deal. So if you want to come, I'd really recommend it. And then, the last thing I wanted to tell you about is this Books for Life. I don't know if you've heard about this, but I've been working with the Relay for Life group over at Cornell, and Chris Squires is going to let them use her former yoga studio there on Main Street to put up a used bookstore, a pop-up bookstore. It's going to be open just for 10 days. They're taking book donations from anyone in the community that wants to, and then they'll resell those books. All that money's going to go to Colleges Against Cancer. Anyway, I think that's all I wanted to tell you, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Five minutes?
Well, under.
No, I more than that. No, red flag. Red flag.
Absolutely, Dave. Of the bookstore.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? If you know anyone else, we'll move on to Parks and Rec, LEGO. Lego Robotics Team.
LEGO or Lego.
Yeah. Lego, my ego.
Yeah. All right. Bringing up some trophies here.
That's pretty cool.
And then I'm going to share this.
I'll break it.
I'll talk one day. Who'd he say?
Be gentle.
Check, check, one, two. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members. I want to take this opportunity to recognize our LEGO Robotics Team again for probably the eighth or ninth year in a row you've recognized them for their hard work, their recognition, their accomplishments, and not only our regional competition, but also the state competition. I have with me Tommy Ferguson, Henry Ryan, and Adam Cookland, three individuals that were on those teams. We have two teams at Park and Rec. Were you all on the same team?
Yes.
Okay. They're all on one team. They competed at the Regionals, and which award did we win at the Regionals?
I think it was...
Yeah, I'll let you go, Tom. Tommy's prepared his speech.
Our team won the championship award and the Global Innovation Award at Regionals.
Nice. Well done. Well done, Chris. We do have three of the individuals on the teams, but I also want to recognize the two coaches, because without them, this program couldn't happen. And I'd like to recognize Jane Knopman and Lisa Edwards back here. You guys stand up. Stand up. Both of them have been an integral part of this program, and Jane has been a part of this program since the beginning. So, hats off to both of them. So I want them to take a moment to recognize them. The picture that I'm sitting around, that's all the awards that we have won throughout the years of this program. So, you'll see why we have a trophy case at the new Wellness Center.
Yeah.
For this and for other things as well. So, thank you. Tommy, do you have a few words you'd like to say?
Yes.
Okay. If you don't know, you can actually...
We'd like to thank the city and Matt Siders for all the support and help this season. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
And thank you, city.
Good? Okay.
Thank you. We're very proud of you.
Any questions, anything? Okay, thank you, everybody.
That's awesome. All right, next item, consent agenda, approval of council minutes from March, February 4th, council meeting.
I move approval of the council, maybe council minutes from our department.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing on a resolution approving Budget Amendment 1 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. I'll open the public hearing. Everybody that wants to address the council. Same going on. I will close the public hearing. Then, to Resolution 2-20-2019A, preventing Budget Amendments 1 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. Scott?
Scott can take it. I make up eighty-seven percent of it, but we'll go.
The look on your face was priceless.
This is usually our bigger amendment. Even so, it's usually about half the size that it is with this one. The reason that there are so many items that we're amending for is we expected some of the capital improvements to be slightly further along in their construction. So, the lights at Fifth and First are now waiting until June 4th at the latest. So, that construction's on hold. The UV disinfection is moving forward, but only a portion of it needs to be constructed by August 1st. The rest will actually go into next fiscal year. So, when we do a budget, we kind of project how much of that capital project, if it's going to go over two fiscal years, is going to go in each one. Then, being farther behind, we didn't bring in near as much revenue. We didn't borrow any money for the UV disinfection yet. So, you're seeing a reduction of about $1.2 million from receipts. We didn't get that funds. We withdrew from the CAT grant, that $500,000 that you see there, so obviously we have to amend those funds back out. But, again, this is just as we get through our fiscal year, and we'll do this one more time, when we start to really tune in the numbers, we amend them back so that it looks at real time versus the projections that we have up to the end of the year. This year and next year, next fiscal year will be, I don't want to say problematic, but we have enough projects that will go through the course of two fiscal years, and this is going to be probably necessary.
When does the work actually start on the wastewater?
So, my best understanding right now, it will start this spring, at least for the UV disinfection. Now, I do have a meeting scheduled for this week. The design that they have our plant programmed after has run into some pickups in some other areas, so we're talking about whether or not this is still going to be the best design. By our permit, you know, we've told the state we'll be done by August 1st, so that portion of the construction will need to be done by August. And then, the rest of it, the remaining items, could be over the course of the next fiscal And for those, you know, wondering what the UV disinfection is, it is basically UV light bulbs where the affluent will leave the plant, go through these bulbs before it's discharged. It looks like two big concrete troughs that come into one trough where it goes through lights, and then all of the water has to hit a certain percentage of the light, and so that's how it's calculated out. But, if you're looking, the two big clarifiers in the front, the big circles that you see, will have these troughs coming from them, and a little shelter over top where the bulbs would be. So, that portion of the construction will happen yet this summer. And this weather, the community center is probably at least three weeks behind right They've, even with the blankets on the site, there's really nothing they can do with Mother Nature right now. So, I did tell the mayor that they did send me an email today, they've hired Hawkeye Electric to replace Randall. So, and they're on the school side as well. So, again, this is a lot of movement, I realize, but really can't be avoided.
Well, I mean, we're setting a budget now that doesn't begin until July of this year. We're doing that next, so there's... We're good at it, but yeah.
You know, I mean, but, you know, when you have a big project, you change that.
Anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I move approval of the Budget Amendment Number 1 for the fiscal year 2018-2019.
I'll second.
Comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Roddabush.
Yes.
West. Yes. Weasler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right. Next item, Ordinance 1-21-2019A, amending Ordinance 1119-2018A, vacating and selling a portion of north-south 16-foot alley located within 824 and 96th Summit Avenue within the city limits of Mount Vernon. This is the third and final reading, I assume. Nothing to report, Chris?
We've got, had no communication beyond the last reading, so...
The time you mentioned is November 8th, whatever it was.
Yeah, March 28th.
That being said, I move approval for Ordinance 1-21-2019A.
I'll second.
Comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Roddabush.
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Next item, Ordinance 1-21-2019B, amending Chapter 27 Housing Commission of the Municipal Code of Mount Vernon. This is the third and final reading.
Same.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1-21-2019B.
I'll second that. Comments? No comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I assume Chris will fill this next one. Ordinance 2-20-2019A, dividing the general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain properties located within the Spring Meadow Heights urban renewal area in the City of Mount Vernon, County of Lynn, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Mount Vernon, County of Lynn, Mount Vernon Community School District, and other taxing districts we paid to a special fund for payment of principal interest loans, money of advantage to indebtedness, including bonds issued or to reissue incurred by the city in connection with the Spring Meadow Heights urban renewal area. Page 1. Good. Great. Chris?
I did not write this.
Somebody wants to translate that into English?
Basically, this is the enabling document for Phase 1 of the Spring Meadow Heights subdivision, and you're going to have an ordinance for each one of the phases and each of the subdivisions. So, this is how we created a new 10-year window for each phase. Granted, each TIP district can only last for 20 years, but they did not want, for instance, the Phase 1 construction to start the clock ticking for the rest of the five phases as far as the 10 years concerned. So, that's essentially what this ordinance does. We've already adopted and improved resolutions accepting the improvements in the subdivision. So, this is the next and final step in order to start collecting taxing and financing dollars on the homes that are being built currently.
Just one question. The item is listed as Ordinance 2-20-2019C. Is it A or C?
It's A. Yeah, the report seems to reflect A.
Well, maybe we have to... In that case, I would move approval of Ordinance 2-20-2019A, accepting all of the things that change the red off. I'm not allowed to go down that road.
Comments? Comments? Sue? Roll call, please.
Rose?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item, Resolution 2-20-2019B, setting the salaries for the appointed officers and employees of the City of Mount Vernon for fiscal year 2019-2020.
So, for myself, Chief Shannon, Alex Wilcock, Heather Flynn, we are all scheduled at the 2.75%, which is the same that the unions were set to receive this year. I included the memo that we discussed last year as I have worked to create separation and get employees where they need to be. So, Nick, Sue, and Matt obviously all have higher salary increases. This is the second year and the final year for those increases to take place, with Matt's being the largest, obviously, because he's taking over the Wellness Center. If anybody has any questions as to why we're doing this now, you can come and look at the four pages full of information that need to be done prior to the opening of this facility. So, all in all, comfortable with the recommendations moving forward. The mayor has not completed my review, so this is probably, nobody gets this raised until July, so as soon as it's done, it might be a...
That's just... Suspension. The budget can be shifted.
So, no, I, you know, I'm super proud of my staff this year. We've accomplished a lot, looking back at your goals and objectives. We've hit on every one of them in under a year, in two-year time. So, they're not all done, but very comfortable with where we're at, with the growth that we're seeing, so...
I would agree with that wholeheartedly. To go to the team. Any questions or comments?
Are we going to move to like increases based on what you've done, rather than automatically everybody gets across the board, anything like that? Usually, it's incentive-based, but it's just if somebody's working really hard and somebody isn't, they get the same. That always, it's tough to do, so we just wanted to... I can, and we've talked about merit-based increases for department heads. The union contracts do not allow merit-based increases, but, so we would have kind of a 50-50 split between my staff. So, half of my staff is department head, and the other half of my staff are covered under union contract. So, am I opposed to that? Absolutely not. And I think if you put kind of a side-by-side as far as what we've accomplished over the last three years, you know, there are people on here that probably deserve more money based upon their actions. But, yeah, I agree with what you're saying, and I know that we've talked about it before. As we discussed last year, I wanted to use, essentially, especially with Nick and Sue and Matt, get them to where they should be as far as where their counterparts would be paid, what we would have to hire somebody at to replace them, and then we can kind of move into that discussion. We do have the ability to have some conversation, obviously, about the public works portion of that as they change the rules on collective bargaining in that regard. So, Police Department, obviously, not as much, but, yeah, I think that's always a question moving forward.
Just kind of make sure we have the right tools and resources in place now, but, yeah, I would wholeheartedly agree. Eric as well.
Someone who's done whole merit and percentage of increases over 43 years, all merit is, would seem like would make a lot of sense and would be motivational and so on, the jobs that we're talking about here are not, you know, producing widgets. If you're producing an entity you can be judged on very easily, without any argument, about how many widgets you produce versus how many the next person produced. But here, how, but now you put on calculations with the Police Department or with the parks, and you know, whether, is it A grade or B grade or whatever there. So, I don't know how you could put a matrix together to do that evaluation. I mean, as much as I like to do merit, but I don't think there, that would be tough to set a matrix, then it would be tough to have the conversation to judge people against it, because, you know, how much of it actually happened that, you know, the supervisor didn't know about and so on. So, I can see where the percentage is probably the way to go, unless I see a better instrument with a lot of resources to it. Plus, this is the whole, you know, awkward topic to bring up publicly in a meeting and say, nah, I think everybody's okay except that top of the police chief, I shouldn't be so as high, or something like that, you know? And when I was, when I was a supervisor, the argument that came back was, well, if the police chief wasn't up to par, then he should have been a council during that whole year to what items need to do to get up to a level of speed or get coached out at one or the other. So, that puts the ordinance on the supervisor there, but so...
Just noticed, too, that Heather and Joe are flipped in this, so Joe should be the higher wage if you look under administration. Heather's at $40,000, and we'll go up to $48,000.
I was going to ask that.
Joe, yeah. Joe's, which the CCG does, last year did do more of a merit base with him. This year chose to stay with the 2.75%. Yeah, it is difficult, obviously, to set the parameters for a merit bank. I mean, when we set tangibles, you set tangibles, you know, your six top items that we're supposed to be working towards. Sometimes those are easy to hit, some of those are not. For instance, you know, the community center, there are some items that we can move forward in front of you at least before you can make a decision. Having somebody look at the fire station on a kind of a private development is much more difficult to obtain, I would think. It hasn't necessarily been the case, but normally speaking, that can be somewhat difficult. But, yeah, I think the challenge, obviously, with merit-based is, again, you're looking at your department heads. In some instances, and I don't want to speak for my department, but moving forward, actually leaving room for additional staff will probably be more imperative to us than potentially getting a higher raise than what everybody else is getting. I don't, I can tell you that there's nobody on this list right now that doesn't reserve at least 2.75, if not more, but I bring up the PD, for instance, they could definitely use an administrative individual, at least on a permanent part-time basis, 30 hours a week, to help do the backlog of paperwork that comes up consistently. So, I, you know, just kind of our two cents, it's not necessarily imperative. We're obviously happy and love working in Mount Vernon and would do it regardless, so...
For free?
Be careful when you have the yes walk away.
I like it a lot, but I don't know about that.
But, why I'm bringing this up is a previous employee here was constantly not returning calls to the public, not making the appointments that they scheduled, stuff like that. And let's say it is 2.75, and if you get so many calls and the public's not happy, then they can be dropped from that 2.75 to 1.5 or whatever. Because like I said, this person was constantly doing it, to me personally and other people too, and constantly got his pay. So, that's where you can hit them. You don't have to...
And so you know that by approving this resolution, it's more for budgeting purposes so that we put the right dollar amounts in the budgets. But, again, I kind of tongue-in-cheek said it before, but if I have my review with the mayor, and the mayor says to you that I don't recommend the 2.75, this doesn't guarantee that I get that 2.75 in July. So, there are some openings there to continue to do the merit even in that regard. So, this is just kind of setting that top dollar amount for budget purposes more than anything, and...
Can't make sure the money's in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, Chris, and I think it's worth having a conversation, because I would agree there that I think there are some ways that we can, that there's value in having merit-based pay, and I think there are ways we can, it is, Tom, to your point, very difficult to then put a matrix against it, right? But, I think it's at least worth having a conversation and seeing if there is a way that we can do that and structure it, it's fair, not only to the city, but also to the employees. And if we can, great, and if not, at least we've done the diligence, but...
And as a HR guy in the group, to Eric's point, I would hope that's when somebody, you know, on Chris's staff, would then have those conversations, you know, throughout , whether it's throughout the year, to say, hey, yes, we have 2.7 in the budget, but yeah, I recommend 1.5 or whatever the case may be, based off this long list of reasons, you know? Because that was not happening prior, guys, you know? Yes, we knew there was issues, but, yeah.
All right, so with all that said, I'll...
Yeah.
Come on, sorry.
Who, me?
Right next to you.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Name and address, please, sir.
And Dr. Mark Maldonado, Level 820, 10th Avenue in South Quest. And in the other conversation, when I was studying for my doctor, okay, part of the fund, I think I said it was airport management, and doing that, they had what they called a municipal consultant. What they did is they, basically what you did, they come into town and said, the town said, okay, we want to look at this, we want to look at this, how do we do about it? Who do we seek? What do we, and they would give you an outline of several choices of what way you wanted to do it, so it might be something to think about.
Yeah. Thank you. Entertain a motion for Resolution 2-20-2019B?
I would similarly. I'll second.
With the note of Heather Flynn and Joe Johnson.
Roll call, please, Sue.
Weasler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All right. Good conversation, for sure. Next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims list.
I would make a motion to approve the claims list, the last copy was presented, and also the comment about noticing the totals at the end of it for each of the funds, which, now that I finally got done reading the audit report that came out some months ago, that was one of the recommendations from that audit, and I noticed that on here a few, last few months, and thank you for acting on that, so it's not that problem. Yes, the motion approved.
I'll second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if you care, side of discussion consideration of setting a public hearing date for ordering construction of certain improvements. Improvement preliminary plans and fixing a date for improvement improvements, not as a wastewater treatment plant improvements, twenty nineteen.
So on March fourth. You will set a time and place for bids to be taken. For the public to review those bids, the plan of specifications to be completed, so on and so forth, so as a councilperson, we started had referred to earlier, this is the start of the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And. Contract, I would expect contracts and bonds to be completed. In April with the construction day, probably towards the end of April, first part of June. It's not a significant construction project that you need disinfection portion of it, it doesn't disrupt our activities down there. The rest of the the projects do require some numerating, so that's why you'll see a much longer timeframe for those.
One question, is is the worksels specialized, if you don't expect a lot of bidders for this, I have no idea about something like this.
Some of it is, yes, some of it is not, the work itself is not necessarily specialized in some of the equipment that goes. So for instance, the, like I said, the UV disinfection, there are more or less concrete troughs. That need to be constructed. The instruments that go in those troughs are. I won't say proprietary, but there are few and far between in as far as the number of vendors that you're going to get. So you might have three or four construction companies that will bid the work, but they'll bid the same equipment. And so I, you probably will not see as much variance in cost with this project as you did with the community center.
Good question, Tom.
I move that we set the public hearing date for March fourth, twenty nineteen, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if you care, next item, discussion consideration of setting a public hearing date for a request to rezoom property located at two hundred seventh street southeast. From GC General Commercial to TR Traditional Residential.
This is a case where a home was built and it sits on the same side as some other commercial properties in between the church and then the bank. There's residential right across the street. After the housing. Collapse in the late, early two thousands. Underwriters have made it increasingly more difficult for people to get mortgages or second mortgages when their houses cannot necessarily be rebuilt, so. This house is currently considered not conforming because it is a home that sits in a general commercial district that's not allowed under the zoning, so. This individual is requesting that their house be rezoned to traditional residential, which makes a ton of sense with residential being right right across the street. It allows this home to continue being a home well in the future, so you'll discuss that more, P and Z has looked at it, but this is just setting a hearing date for the next meeting.
So this is, okay, so this is right at the parking lot for the church.
Right? Is that one like?
I mean, that's a real.
Angle there? Like that, it's like right here, right on that little slipper, as a matter of fact. It's a, I think a brick house, it just sold.
So all we're doing is setting the public hearing, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, in that case, I move approval or I move that we set the public hearing date for our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
My second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if you care, next item, discussion consideration of submitting a large match grant application to the Wellmark Foundation.
So the Parks and Rec Board specifically, Rory has identified this grant as a possible option to enhance the community wellness area. They don't match any of the funds in the building itself, as they don't match for-profit, they consider for-profit organizations. They do pay close attention to the community garden aspect and then walking paths for people to get to locations that would have that, so. We started to look at the trail network that was proposed to connect to the high school, some of these old trails going back to Palisades, our facility. It's a different pot of money for us, but it's a hundred thousand dollars potentially through this grant application. The city of Mount Vernon doesn't have a lot of opportunities to apply for grants, we don't meet a lot of income guidelines for none of our grants, this one we do. So we're seeking permission to at least put an application for this connect to the tennis courts, our facility, this high school, back to Palisades, so it'll be kind of one large trail network. Eventually in the future, they'd like to potentially add some adult outdoor workout stations along the trail network, so it's kind of one big massive complex as we move forward, so. This is obviously, the the potential is a dollar for dollar match, so you would, if we were to get the match, would be on the hook for a hundred thousand dollars on this project. The the project estimate right now is actually just under two hundred thousand for that entire network. The deadline is Friday, normally I would have more information, the application and everything in front of you, but. We just found that it has to be in on Friday, so I'm asking that you trust staff to say, you know, it is an internet connected trail. And part of the trail is already being programmed with the facility as it was, so this is an opportunity for us to get a much larger network completed.
So if I understand the numbers you just gave us, you're not really asking us to spend any money, we aren't already planning on spending.
We wouldn't spend, we would spend more money because the the trail heading back to Palisades Road, paving that section, going up to the tennis courts. Giving us a couple more crosswalks when it gets up to the high school parking lot is not currently planned, there is a connection from our parking lot to the high school parking lot as planned as part of the the wellness dollars. What I am saying is we do have trail funds with local office and sales tax that are available, and this was one of the areas identified by Parks and Rec Board. As necessary to to connect back up, so. You would, it's not, we we don't necessarily have to go out and find these dollars, you don't have to borrow for these dollars, they are already sitting there.
They're emerging trails.
You're taking that along as thirty.
Correct.
Cool.
Yeah, no brainer.
Yeah, I was really thrilled to see this because I I was aware of this grant and I'm glad we were personally.
Yeah, we have, thankfully, we've got a lot of help from a staff perspective, we've got a lot of things going on, but Rory and Ben and Fran and Brandon have been instrumental in helping us get the application ready to go.
That's great.
Cool. Do we need to approve anything or is?
You would.
Yeah, thumbs up.
Approve the grant application and thereby approving the hundred thousand dollar match.
In that case, I would move approval of the large match grant application to the Wellmark Foundation.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if you care, alright, next item, reports, Mount Vernon Police Report, Chief, what do you got for us, sir? Nothing other than what you'd already received, anybody have any questions for Chief?
Disney Month.
It was. February's not looked so much better. Alright, next item, this is the Mount Vernon Public Works Report, Nick, same question to you, sir, I'm sure you've been a little busy as well.
Just a little. Namie, Council Mayor, an update on the lighting or the traffic light, Highway One, it's up and running.
I saw some green today.
Yeah, new controller zoom, we are still efforting on the crosswalk buttons, so. It was not conveyed to the guy that came out and programmed it, but we will prefer that the crosswalk always comes up, however, it does make the crosswalk, or it does make that light less efficient if that happens, because. Currently, if you approach First Street, that's the only thing that will trigger that light to turn green, so Highway One always has to be green, and this is for at night, because they have residents that will. So semis are not stopping for no reason at night, so they're still efforting to try to see.
It's also good when the weather's bad and there's ice on the.
And and we still turn it to flashy when there, the DOT requires that, so. Turn, getting it to go green all the time and have the crosswalk work. They're seeing if that can be programmed in there because we don't have any sensors on Highway One that detects a car.
That makes sense, though.
Yeah, so they're trying to, they think they can do it, they're not positive, so I just wanted to update you on that, because they don't, if if they can't. Get it to work out, then that light would constantly be flipping and then we would have a red light on Highway One, and we don't want that when there's no traffic from basically eleven PM to, you know, six AM.
That's good to know.
I can tell, working downtown, people know immediately when that starts working, I've heard about four particular people, the morning that it started up again. How's the new front end loader testing out?
Great, we were cutting all kinds of time when we load trucks out in the morning, so it's went from maybe six to seven skid loader buckets to. Two or three of the loader buckets and the trucks full and on its way already, so much more efficient in that regard.
We are looking at an option that potentially will use that. A loader, maybe not this loader, but a loader. Had with the thought of purchasing it next fiscal year, so at least this year, that would go as a credit towards our overall purchase price. We would in turn get rid of the backhoe and then get a little bit larger mini excavator. The backhoe obviously isn't conducive for the cemetery at all. If we had a slightly larger mini hoe that would. Be more conducive for water main breaks, still maneuverable enough to to work in a cemetery, but then also be, you know, large enough to dig for water main breaks that would. Handle the portion of the backhoe that we utilize the most, and then the loader, of course, with. Loading of vehicles in this bucket isn't even a larger bucket.
No, so obviously, we're just trying it out at the moment, they they make push blades that, looking in the future towards the wellness center, would we have this huge parking lot? Now, we're adding more parking lots and this loader will be able to put like a thirteen foot blade that, I think you see them parked in target parking lots, those. We'd be able to put one of those on this piece of equipment and clean that in no time, so. Time is usually of the essence when there's snow on the ground, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Nick?
Other positive comment about a negative situation, somebody had a mailbox knocked over, I believe, right? But the quickness with which, unfortunately, we put up a good attitude from the city council, from the city offices about how, okay, we'll know that, we'll get it taken care of within the next number of hours than it was, so. You know, potentially negative situation, but possibly handled by the city office and public works.
I would encourage. Individuals, and we will have a kind of an after, when you're sitting down, the chief and myself and Nick, but. If you see it, if you're talking to people, those that are pushing snow via truck from one driveway across the street into the right away, hinders us, we don't have a. Maintainer that's able to cut those banks back, so they actually hinder our ability to push snow up and over that. We, staff has obviously been too busy and too tired to worry about it, but same with your cars, if you know that we have a snow event and the weathermen haven't been off. Unfortunately, this entire month, if you can find alternative places other than the street to park your vehicles. That saves trips in and around, we get it cleaned a lot faster. Report, you know, these, as big as these machines are, does not mean that they can stop on a dime, it's not like they're.
They'll follow them for you.
Yeah, you know, we try to obviously avoid. Any accidents that we do have and and this accident obviously could have been much worse if. If Nick would have been traveling at any faster rate of speed, so, you know, this wet heavy snow requires those trucks to move faster in order to get it up and over the bank. It's dangerous enough as it is, so again, if you do have neighbors that you see doing this, ask them to please stop, the right away is for the snow from the street, not necessarily the snow from your driveway. But other than that, I think everybody's been in fairly good spirits, the the mailboxes at this point, any wet snow is going to probably rip them. Off simply because we've got nowhere else to go with it. I even had fewer complaints about, I just cleaned the end of my driveway and you came back and drove by, I swear we do not sit down at the end of the street and let you do this. I see you guys, but it does, it does take, have these two if you pass, especially with the snow that we have.
Next year, we're going to borrow a program that less than one uses, the way it uses, where we'll, we'll try, if our fall is somewhat. Less busy with tree cutting or something to those, we're going to go out and measure mailboxes that we know are problems, and if they are not too cold, and it's on the UPS. Many postal service website, what the code is, and it's roughly six inches behind the face of the curb, so back of curb should be flush, six to eight inches. So if they don't meet those standards, we're going to tag the mailbox and tell them, we would appreciate if they move them, if they have not moved and and we hit them, we're going to tell them that you've already been notified. You were out of compliance, so we're not replacing that mailbox, so we have a few areas to tell them.
Second cars that don't move.
Good.
We we were, we're going to try this season, we we failed to get out there early enough in the fall, so we should almost do it in the spring to give them more time.
Overall, great job by you and your and your team.
Pretty tough.
Yeah, I have too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, next to the Mount Vernon Parks and Earth Report, Matthew, anything for the for the council, sir?
Nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions for for Matthew?
Nick wants me to hand something, but I have nothing.
I'm actually surprised you're not. He was on the front end.
It's nice to read about the swimming pool this time, I just want to say that, I appreciate that.
Alright, we want to, discussion items, budget memo, Chris?
So, you know, as I've done in the past, I've given you a a four-page memo that kind of highlights all of the budgets that we've got. Majority of what I. Request or what I call our odds and ends budgets, historic preservation ban, public land, none of those changed. With the exception of the library and the ambulances, were the only two increases from the groups, the others decreased. Generally speaking, the general fund has decreased by just under, just over four and a half percent, about a hundred thousand dollars. I always tell people that to to read this memo and yes, decreases are are great, but keep in mind that sometimes it happens to capital projects, so one year we will buy a twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment out of one of these line items, the next year we won't. It'll look like we did a twenty thousand dollar decrease in that line item and we did not, sometimes we program them in different areas, so just a kind of a word of caution. Although we're, I I would say that we're basically holding the line to the best of our ability as far as purchasing those. The the franchise fee is kind of the. We'll call it the outlier right now, the projections that I've said before from Alliance Energy seem to be on the lower side, so. so there may be more project, probably available to the council. That's a positive. If the projections where we think they're going to come out at, at 5% hold true, projects like Palisades, like First Street, become more of a reality because we can spread them over two years, but bring enough cash enough to have to worry about borrowing for them, so. With that, as I've said before, garbage does not have to be touched yet this year. I think by taking the lead program back off, we'll save enough dollars to take on the increase plus pay some of the expenses that we'll have, creating the compost area and some other things. Water and sewer unfortunately are going to at least need about five, or about 3% for the next five years. We can keep it at five, I can't tell you, I can tell you that the projections require five, beyond that is a question, like I said, if you want to start with five, that is okay. Originally I said between five and 10, but five would be prudent at this point, knowing that we have bond payments that we have to make, so. I'm also giving you the CIP at the next meeting, I will have the budget presentation included. We'll have that on the website, the CIP will, the final CIP will be on the website as well. Beyond that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
We talked about this last year, but this is just a very little tool, four-page do and it does a nice job of really highlighting everything and you don't gloss over after.
Yeah. Yeah.
Line item, spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And a good point about some decreases aren't necessarily decreases. And similarly, some increases aren't necessarily increases.
Yes.
You know, you've got to budget it in.
When you look at the PowerPoint, for instance, it will look like, it's interesting because our revenues this year went from about 15 million last year to projected 15 million, and we obviously amended some of that back out tonight, but projected 15 million down to this year, I think it's going to be closer to about nine. But if you look at our expenditures, it's back up to 15. Well, money, the borrowing that we received in this fiscal year, we can't show again the next fiscal year, so it's going to look like we're spending more than we're bringing in, and that's the way the accounting works out for cities, but yeah, the numbers can be deceiving both ways, and I always want to point out, I don't want it to make it seem like we were miracle workers this year and had all of these decreases because that doesn't necessarily always hold true.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right. Next item, reports, we just had one, one item, had EMA meeting last night, that's a emergency management agency meeting, main goal of last night was just approving the fiscal year 2020 budget, so that is done. That's all I got. Anything for council, committee reports, anyone?
No report, just a question, is a date been sent for that State of the City evening? Yep. We'll close those.
After it got canceled, rescheduled a few times.
I know that they have, they're discussing it, they have, I don't believe they've confirmed that in much of the years.
All right, Chris, city administrator report?
We've actually tossed on everything in my report.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Anybody? All right, roll for business. I didn't stand the dirt.